I Hate Politics is a podcast about a human activity we love to hate. I'm Sunil Das Gupta. Since the pandemic, school boards around the country have become venues for political contestation over cultural values. And this last school year in Frederick County, Maryland, the Board of Education saw escalating tensions between conservative activists and liberal school board members over LGBTQ rights in county schools. The temperature in Frederick increased in the run up to and in the aftermath of the 2024 elections, which not only brought Donald Trump back to power, but also a new conservative and polarizing school board member, Colt Black, who attacked trans rights from the board table. Then a conservative activist tried to forcibly seat herself at a board meeting. And in May, one man, Sean Porter, fake mooned board members, dropping his shorts, but not his underwear. Frederick County has been transitioning politically for some time now. In the past, committed conservatives sought the county's sparse population, cheaper land, and free-thinking ways, making it the intellectual hub of conservative thinking and activism in the state and in the DC region as a whole. But for the last two decades, the county has been the fastest growing jurisdiction in the state, mainly because priced-out Montgomery County residents have moved north along Interstate 270. These newcomers have brought with them liberal and democratic values that have run up against the county's pre-existing conservative thinking. But now, the return of Trump has boded conservative action, especially around LGBTQ rights. I reached out to the leadership of the Frederick County School Board, President Ray Gallagher and Vice President Dean Rose, to ask them about the fight over LGBTQ rights and its impact on school governance. Stay with us.
I Hate Politics is brought to you by UMBC's Political Science Program, where you'll learn to shape public policy, impact communities, and function at the center of modern society. Learn more at shadygrove.umbc.edu.
I Hate Politics is a podcast about our neighborhoods, workplaces, schools and streets, and our local governments as they function in diverse and democratic societies. This means our politics are messy, dirty, sometimes corrupt, with often self-serving politicians. But no matter how much we may hate politics, we are never exempt from it, even when we refuse to participate. In fact, the purpose of politics is to keep society functioning precisely when we don't agree with each other, like now. We celebrate new music for the summer, and this is Silver Springs' own power pop band, The Airport Seventy Sevens. Andy Sullivan on guitar, John Kelly on drums, and Cal Everett, famously of the band Four Out of Five Doctors, on the bass. The songs we play come from their brand-new album, Don't Let Go. You can find The Airport Seventy Sevens at airportseventysevens.com and at live concerts all over the DC region. Ray Gallagher, Dean Rose, welcome to I Hate Politics.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Recently, at the Frederick County Board of Education, a possibly Frederick resident, Sean Porter, mooned or fake-mooned the board. What was he protesting?
Dean and I are in leadership for the Board of Education, which means that we do get to speak on behalf of the board, but as our participation today in the podcast, we are speaking as individual board members. So any opinions you might ask about anything, it is not the official stance necessarily of the entire board. Mr. Porter has visited us a couple of times now. This particular meeting, he was objecting to two things. One was that we had recently had another member of the public who is, who's announced her candidacy for the Board of Education for 2026, actually come up on the dais, the board dais, and refused to leave and declared herself to be a board member because she declared that to be the case.
But say that again, please. Somebody came on the board dais and claimed to be a member because she considered herself a member without an election?
Correct, yes. So one of our board members was absent for that particular meeting, and so her seat was vacant. And so this individual came up and sat down and declared herself a board member. She was making a point about our gender identity policy that basically says that we recognize an individual for their, their preferred gender and pronouns. So that she was making this point. She was asked repeatedly by myself as the president to leave. She refused, and so we had to bring our sheriff up to escort her out of the boardroom from that meeting, which she also initially refused to leave for the sheriff as well. And she was issued a no trespass order, which was subsequently lifted by our sheriff. It's a more extensive story, but Sean Porter was, one, objecting to the fact that she was issued a no trespass order for her behavior during that board meeting. And then, secondly, he has an objection to our policy 443, which is our creating a welcoming and affirming educational environment for transgender and gender non-conforming students. So he was sort of duly objecting to both of those things.
Can you tell me a little bit more about this person that occupied that chair? Who this person is, what their political persuasion is? I mean, I understand they are against gender-affirming policy.
Yes. I hate to give her more publicity or airtime, but her name is Heather Fletcher. This is her second or third attempt to get elected. Third, Dean, she's run, this will be her third.
She's coming up on her third, yes. One time, one time lost in the primary and didn't move any further. Next time, lost in the primary, but then was a general election write-in candidate.
Yeah, and she's now declared herself a candidate for 2026.
So I assume that she's conservative. Is she affiliated with Moms Liberty and groups like that?
I don't know if she formally is, but I would, I would assume, yes, that is the tone of her, her campaign.
She has a, she has an organization that she calls, she uses a letterhead called Voices for Freedom. It might be a membership of one, but she uses that letterhead whenever she sends us some notes to the board.
As a result of all of this, are you having to have the sheriff join meetings regularly? And in the past, you didn't. What, how are you coping with all of this?
Yeah, so from, we always have some level of security in our boardroom. At least we have for many years. It is not always a sheriff. We have had some pretty explosive meetings in the past. We, one of our committee meetings, Family Life Advisory Committee several years ago, got borderline violent within the boardroom. And so we've had particular committee meetings where we try to have a sheriff present for those meetings. And then if we hear that there are significant protests planned or presence from maybe opposing groups on any particular issue, we do try to ensure that we have a higher level of security within the boardroom. And sometimes that means a sheriff and a private security guard. Sometimes it means just the sheriff, but we, we do try to pay close attention to the temperature of what we might be expecting in the boardroom.
Frederick County Sheriff is known to be conservative and Trump-aligned. Does that make a difference?
Among his deputies, I do not think so. I think his deputies have been great. The Frederick County Sheriff's Department provides the vast majority of our SROs within our school systems, and they are amazing. So I don't think the political persuasion of their, per se, boss has any impact on the service that they provide us.
Heather Fletcher and Sean Porter objected to Frederick County Public Schools' gender-affirming policy. Now, that's an old policy, right? 2019, 18, something like that?
Yep. It's actually been in place since 2017. However, we are in our revision process for that policy. We have a regular review cycle for our policies and this, which got a little off track, which our board, our current board, has really made, made a commitment two and a half years ago to, to get all of our policies reviewed within a five-year time period. And this is the year that that particular policy was scheduled for review and revision. And so we've had an increased amount of attention. There's been, really, for the past several years, a lot of attention on this policy. But now that we're in the review and revision process, it's intensified.
Can you speak to what the policy says and how you're trying to review it?
Since I have the pleasure of being the chair of the Policy Committee, so 443, it is called, has come up for its normal review. So we just began the process last month. We let the public know. We had a packed boardroom for this very first, and this was just the initial discussion around where we're going with the review process. No decisions were made. We did hear from 20 members of the community. It was intentionally, we evenly split the signups, which brought a little controversy in itself. Then in the coming meeting, which is coming up in June, legal will present a rough draft. There'll be a lot of discussion about what's out there legally, how the policy's supported, in particular by Maryland law and by Comar. So it's going to be a pretty long process. I wish that wasn't the case. We have important work to do. This kind of detracts us, similar to the Sean Porter and Heather Fletcher issues. You know, I mean, Sean Porter, he considers himself a First Amendment advocate. That's really his, I mean, he's appeared relentlessly in Washington County. He's been in Northern Virginia multiple times. He's really gotten himself caught up in some things with the county commissioners in Washington County.
So he's not a Frederick County resident?
It's up in the air. He claims to have whatever, whatever is beneficial to him. When he's in Washington County, he provides a Washington County address. And when he's in Frederick County, he provides a Frederick County address. I do know that his son attends the Maryland School for the Deaf. He's provided that through non-public placement through Washington County Public Schools. So he's a Washington County Public School student who receives a non-public placement at the Maryland School for the Deaf.
Now, with policy 443, what are the specific items under consideration for change?
Let's clarify, I'm speaking as an individual board member and not the Policy Committee as a whole or the board as a whole. My opinion is, in regards to the bathroom issue, that is supported by case law. There was a case in Virginia that was decided in favor of the student against the school system allowing use of bathrooms that matched their gender identity. That case went all the way to the Fourth Circuit. The young man prevailed. It was then appealed to the Supreme Court, and the Supreme Court declined to take the case. Painfully, we are looking at some modifications to pronoun use. Again, because of a case that was decided in Virginia, a teacher refused to use a student's preferred pronoun. After repeated, you know, counseling as an employee, he was terminated. He filed suit, and he prevailed. And that case is also still, that's standing. So, and then, and then there was, I believe there was a second case in Ohio that had a similar outcome. So those are, in particular, the Virginia cases in our circuit. So it kind of is a prevailing case for us. I did find it interesting in reading that case in that he used the person's preferred name. He referred, he refused to use their preferred pronoun. So I just, I thought that was an interesting.
Is that a distinction you can make in policy 443?
That's a great question, that, that can we make a distinction? Because the case, the case, I think harbors, it actually was religious, it was a religious freedom case. And so I'm not, I'm not sure that we can make that distinction, that they're required by policy to use the name and pronoun, the preferred name and pronoun. But I'm, at least my perspective is, the edit that I'm going to be is that we strongly encourage our staff to use preferred name and preferred pronouns. I don't, I don't think legally we can say required. I look forward to getting some more input from our legal counsel that I still question, what are the rights of an employer, an employee relationship, and our, quote-unquote, our customer? Which our students are our customers. So where does that land?
Bathrooms, pronouns, anything else?
Athletics.
Yeah, athletics is a big one.
The main issue is that, quote-unquote, birth or biological males being allowed to play in female sports.
So what if there is a biologically female athlete that wants to compete in, on the male side? Nobody cares about that, right? Because it's.
Correct.
Pretty much.
But when writing policy, how do you finesse that, though?
My perspective, again, is somewhat different than some of my colleagues. I spent many, many years as a coach, 13 of them in FCPS.
What did you coach?
I coached basketball.
All right.
So boys' basketball, I was an assistant boys' basketball coach. And I have understanding of the challenges that are presented with the transgender athlete issue at elite athletic levels. Because all athletes, male or female, once they reach the elite level, high-level Division One college, Olympics, regardless of sex, those people have been training their entire lives at a different level than we're dealing with at the K through 12 public school level.
That's interesting. So you make a distinction between amateur athletics and seemingly professional, like really high level?
I do to some extent, because if you, if you look at it that way, the pool, the pool of athletes at the elite level is extremely small. Example being, and I used this statistic at our policy meeting, and I got torn apart for it, but the president of the NCAA testified before Congress in December and was asked how many transgender athletes were participating in NCAA athletics. And he stated there are 550,000 NCAA athletes. They knew of nine transgender athletes participating. The other point is, a transgender athlete, only one transgender athlete has won an NCAA championship. And that was Leah Thomas, which got a lot of publicity. She was a swimmer. But other than that, no one at the NCAA Division One level has ever won an NCAA championship. So it's not that they're dominating the sport as the fear mongering, you know, oh, they're taking over the sport, they're gonna, they're gonna just do away with women's sports. It's, but my answer to that is, at that elite level, I was disappointed that the NCAA just kind of wrote it off. They, as soon as the executive order came out, they said, that's it. Transgender athletes can no longer participate. Where the NCAA has billions of dollars at their will that they could have used to formulate possibly policies and strengthen policies that still might have allowed transgender athletes to participate, at least in some way. Because they could afford testing, they can afford, because they were already doing, you already had to sit out for one year and then undergo genetic and hormonal testing in order to participate. So they, they had the power that they could have rewritten policy and tried to, tried to make this more inclusive, but they, as soon as the executive order came out, they, per se, saw the writing on the wall, and they just bailed.
Do you have a sense of what the percentage is for school sports?
Well, officially, because transgender athletes in the state of Maryland are not required to declare, they don't have to go to their coach and say, I'm transgender, I would like to participate. They just show up and participate. So officially, in the state of Maryland, we got this report from the governing body, MPSAA in Maryland. There are no transgender athletes participating in girls' sports in the state of Maryland officially. There are also no transgender athletes in Frederick County officially. That's not to say that there may not be, and we've gotten reports from the community that we're full of it and that there are. But they most certainly aren't dominating the sport. They're not winning. So there is no outstanding transgender athlete.
If they don't have to reveal, then you wouldn't know. Then obviously, there is no accounting.
That's the unfortunate issue, because I think if you, you know, the frightening issue, I use the law that was passed in West Virginia, our neighbor, conservative state. They passed a law outlawing transgender females from participating in K through 12 sports. They did not outlaw transgender males, which is now headed to the Supreme Court. A young lady in West Virginia filed suit. She won. She is being allowed still currently, there is a, there is a stay. She is allowed to participate. While it's on the docket, the filings are due July the 18th, and they estimate that the case will go before the Supreme Court in its October session. So, but getting back on the law that they passed there, if there's no obvious that they're transgender, the next step in that law is a genital inspection.
Who's going to do that?
Exactly, exactly. The law, the law says they're going to have a medical professional will do a gender inspection of the athlete to confirm their sex. I, myself, think that's horrible. That's, that's heading down a, because what, what they're allowed to do is anyone is allowed to say, that girl is too good, she must be transgender. So they file an appeal, and that poor young lady is forced to prove where that's headed.
Now, you, there is a Policy Committee. Can you say a little bit about the composition of the committee, who sits on it? I'm particularly interested in where board member Colt Black is, because he is supposed to be a conservative member that just won in November 2024. And one of the reasons why Sean Porter had fake-mooned you all?
He is not on the Policy Committee.
He's on the Curriculum Committee?
Correct.
Okay. While all of this is going on, our school districts' students are recovering from setbacks of the pandemic. Can you step back a little bit and speak to the broader challenges that Frederick County Public Schools faces?
One of the first things I'll mention is that Frederick County has been and continues to be the fastest-growing county population-wise, student population-wise, in the state of Maryland. And this has been compounded now over a number of years. So we are facing facility usage issues. We desperately need to build new schools to accommodate our growth in, in conjunction with rebuilding schools that have failing infrastructure. Operationally, our budget is not truly sufficient to meet the student needs that we are facing. We have a growing special education population within Frederick County. We have, you know, a lot of unique needs. We're balancing the requirements of the blueprint legislation that was put in place by the Maryland Legislature. Right now, we're in the midst of our budget discussions. We have to have a balanced budget by the end of this month. We still need to figure out where we're going to find $2.4 million, which out of our nearly $1 billion budget doesn't sound like a lot, but when we're at a point where we, you know, have had to make a lot of really difficult decisions about what our budget will support, I'm really concerned about the long-term impact. And we keep hearing from the state that the budget outlook does not look any better next year or in the out years. And so these are really concerning conversations that, that we're having that have a big impact on our teachers, what we're able to compensate, how we're able to attract our support employees.
So you're $2.4 million short on a billion-dollar budget?
Right. Well, we started out closer to $30 million, right, Dean, overall? And so over the past two meetings, we've been able to reduce some areas of our budget.
What did you cut?
There were a number of things that we were trying to do. So last year, last budget season, we had to increase class size across the entire district. Technically, it's one student. We increased by one student, but that doesn't actually equate to one extra body in each classroom, right? We had to, that meant reducing some class options at the high school level, increasing the number of students in each classroom. And there's a lot of other, you know, impact across the, the school system. So we did that. We increased our athletic fees for our high school athletics. We increased our use of facility fees for our partners and nonprofits who use our spaces. And we, there was one, oh, we were, we were attempting to increase the amount of salary resource pool that was available to our educators, teachers, support employees. So all four of those things, we had to cut back this year. So we were trying to get back to where we had been last year and.
When is your next collective bargaining season coming up?
So we're, we are still in collective bargaining currently. So we have not reached resolution with our associations as of right now.
And so this budget, you're making a budget and negotiating with the unions at the same time?
Correct.
How's that going?
It's no comment. Yeah, we, we are, we are in that process right now. And so there's really not much that, that I can speak to, because, you know, collective bargaining happens behind closed doors, and then all of our budget discussions happen during our, our open meetings. So it's, it's definitely, but we have, we have to have resolution on our budget by the end of this month.
Now, historically, Frederick County has had some problems with its special education program. And, you know, there is obviously a big special education staff shortage across the nation. How are you dealing with that?
You are correct. We were subject to a Department of Justice investigation for the past several years focused on our special education programming with NFCPS, which has recently resolved itself. But that doesn't mean that we, you know, are not continuing to focus on the level of service that our special, special education students really need and, and deserve. We're doing the best that we can. I mean, we've staffing-wise, we are pretty close to being fully staffed in our special education programs. It's something that our board looks at every single meeting. We receive a report, but of course, there are areas that are difficult to fill. Speech-language pathologists are one that we tend to have to use contractors instead of being able to, to hire. And that's just one example.
Unfortunately, special education, if you think about from the federal government, is grossly underfunded. You know, the, the federal government itself is in violation of their own law. They passed the idea, you know, the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act and said that they would fund at the 40% level. And they actually never exceeded 20.
Is it your expectation that the new federal administration will even make the 20?
No.
What is the level of shortfall on the capital budget side?
It's a difficult question to answer because the way that our capital budget is structured is we do essentially a 10, 10-year plan and ask of the county and the, the state. We have millions and millions of dollars in deferred maintenance costs that we are, you know, putting off because we cannot necessarily meet that, that need. We get $17 million. It's a very small amount per year from the state unless they've done specialized legislation to increase some of the, the capital funding, which has happened and has allowed us to expedite some of the, the rebuild of some of our elementary schools. But it's wholly insufficient. We have an elementary school in the eastern part of the county that our, our county executive has allocated funds from the county specifically to be able to build quickly in a year. We had, have an elementary school that this year was at 157% of capacity and expected to continue growing because of the development in this particular area. And so we are building an elementary school essentially in a year to be able to alleviate some of that overcrowding. But we've had a high school that has been in our 10-year plan and has continued to sort of move down Brunswick High School that is in dire need of an update. And because building a high school now is at probably $170 million to, to be able to build, it just keeps getting moved down in terms of the priority list because it's an area that's not necessarily growing. It is an area that needs a new high school though.
And all these really difficult issues are being sidelined now by gender policy?
Yeah.
Particularly in Frederick County, when we need our community advocating in Annapolis on our behalf. Because not only are we the fastest-growing county in the state of Maryland, we're the fastest-growing by 400%. We're exploding in comparison. There are, I think.
Yeah. Well, how much, how much of your money do you get from the state? I mean, aren't you, don't you have to advocate to Frederick County itself first?
Well, not, I'd say equally, I'd say not first. I'd say the same. Now, on the capital, capital side, again, it's, it's the same. But the state actually picks up about 60 to 65% on the capital side. Then on the operational side, it's more of a 50-50 per se. It's like 47, 48, and then the feds kick in five or whatever.
50% of your operating budget comes from the state?
A little bit less than 50%.
What is your farms rate?
Low 30.
Has that jumped? I, I've heard that that number has jumped dramatically.
I don't know that it's been dramatic. We've seen a steady climb. But we are, we, we're seeing a dramatic increase of our multilingual learners. I mean, you know, obviously, that, that requires additional funding that we don't receive. It's painful. And that, that's what the distraction is causing is we need, we need our folks in Frederick County advocating, yes, at the county level, but at the state level. They need to be advocating for modifications to the blueprint, modifications to funding. We've attempted, our, our folks that represent us in Annapolis have attempted this past session to get a bill passed that would give some recognition to Frederick County and our funding difficulties due to our growth, incorporate a growth factor. But it, it didn't even make it out of committee.
What are the adjustments you're looking for in the blueprint?
Mostly, we need them to slow some of the deadlines.
But they did slow the deadline with respect to hiring more teachers and planning time.
Now, that was, that was a big one. You have to consider, there's also the foundational funding that we're still struggling with.
So it is my understanding that the state is having difficulty with revenue. The county is having lesser difficulty with revenue because, you know, property assessments went up dramatically in the last several years. Is there consideration of a tax raise in Frederick County now?
I don't think so. And I will say, I mean, two things. One is that, that the pension issue pushed over $5 million of pension responsibility from the state onto the county for this, this upcoming operating budget. And so that was $5 million of revenue that we, we would have seen from our county that could have been directed to cover some of these other areas. And what I'm hearing is that the rest of the pension responsibility is going to be pushed back onto the counties from the state. Possibly this year during a special session of the legislature. Our county executive and county council last year did put in a slight property tax increase directed specifically to help address aging infrastructure.
How much money will you get from it?
Maybe $20 million. But I don't think that they have any plans to do any more tax increases in the near future.
Ray Gallagher, Dean Rose, thank you for taking the time. I hope there's less drama on the Frederick County Board of Education.
You and me both.
So do we.
That was Frederick County, Maryland School Board President Ray Gallagher and Vice President Dean Rose. Gallagher and Rose are clearly trying to find, trace, and walk a fine line between LGBTQ student and staff inclusion in county schools without precipitating a backlash from conservative activists. If Frederick's changing demography could be fully determinative, the county would likely have more liberal LGBTQ policy in its schools. But Frederick's longstanding and influential conservative community holds power, and they can be disruptive. Frederick School Board Vice President Dean Rose described the political contestation over LGBTQ rights as distracting from the real job at hand, running the schools, ensuring staffing, especially in special education, and English language learners, and meeting the budget gap. But what takes up the board's time instead are theatrics like Sean Porter's fake mooning the school board. Why does a simple matter of inclusion need to be fought over in the year 2025? And yet, that is the issue on center stage. Gallagher and Rose may want to move on to budget issues, but they cannot. So there are two underlying questions to ask. Why is LGBTQ rights on center stage? And how can Gallagher and Rose push it off stage? The answer to the first question is straightforward. Issues with the sharpest difference between contesting sides occupy the political center stage. Budget issues may be important, but only if there are residents sufficiently exercised by them to come out to board meetings to protest. If instead anti-LGBTQ activists are more exercised, they come to school board meetings and can force a shift in the agenda. Gallagher and Rose want to push the LGBTQ rights off center stage, call the issue a distraction, and deal with it procedurally. But the tension in that argument is this. If it is really distracting, then why are they paying attention to it? Their opponents know this well and keep bringing back the issue. That is the political contest. We may hate this aspect of politics, but that's what it is. A tool to use on the most ardent differences in society that no other domain, technology, money, faith, or even law can solve. That's all for this episode of I Hate Politics, where we aim to stem the decline in local news by working with community voices. Don't forget to tune in to our Tuesday morning news analysis. I Hate Politics is produced by me, Sanitita Skripta, with support from the University of Maryland, Baltimore County. I direct UMBC's Political Science Program at the universities at Shady Grove in Montgomery County, where, among other things, we explore and learn about politics, government, and society close to home. Music for this episode comes from Silver Spring Power Pop Band, The Airport Seventy Sevens. Andy Sullivan on guitar, John Kelly on the drums, and Cal Everett on the bass. The songs for this episode come from their new album, Don't Let Go. You can find their music at airport77s.com and at live concerts all over the DC region. If you want to share your music on the show or know someone else who might want to, please email us at producer@ihippod.org. I hope you will subscribe and share the podcast as we bring you stories about politics close to you and to your home. See you next time.